The meeting of the whole to order at 5:32 PM. Please call the roll.
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mr. Rollins? Mr. Scirvano?
Here.
Mrs. McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Segal?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Escobedo? With six present, one absent, we have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Rod and Connor again for working behind the scenes to produce our broadcasts on Channel 20. A reminder to the board members to hold your questions and write them down until after the presentations are done. There are meeting minutes from March 5th, Committee of the Whole. With a consensus to approve those? Thank you. We'll now move on to reports and Lee gets to begin.
I wonder that we had our rejected signs already so that when she presented her budget, we...
Yes, I'm used to being rejected.
Okay.
That's why it's grand babies.
Yes, and puppies.
All right. It's my pleasure and honor to present the Legal Department's FY '20 Budget. We support all of the goals, but primarily we focus on Goal Five, which is the fiscal and operational stewardship of the district. We're a really small department. There's seven of us in the department. And you'll see a variance on our salaries. This is our total budget, which is roughly $1.8 million is what we are proposing for FY '20. There's a slight variance, a decrease on salaries and benefits, and that's due to 15% of my salary shifting over to the Ops area. The FY '19 purchased services are primarily outside council, as are the FY '20 proposed spend, outside legal spend. And I think we overestimate or underestimated what we would be able to do this year with the dollars that we had put in the budget, because we did bring on, as you know, a deputy counsel. And so, we actually still have, we're still transitioning in that regard. And so, our budget will actually be over about $100,000 this year. The outside council services focus on three areas: student matters, employment matters, and business matters. And so, large contracts, we send to outside council, real estate matters. Employment matters focus primarily on staff discipline or arbitration issues that are fairly complex, or labor negotiations. And so, because we have three contracts up, as well as some preparatory meetings that we are anticipating with the REA, we did include in their additional spend for outside council for FY '20. We do have discipline and residency hearings for students, and that's primarily where most of our outside council spend is. Our special education spend has been decreasing with bringing on the deputy general counsel. This is just a summary year-to-year with outside council spend. And you can see, depending on what is going on in any given year, it can shift upwards to $1 million. But it has, we've maintained, I think, a good budget on this with the number of matters that we do have coming before us. Contracts are primarily just online research and software management programs and a small budget. And our return on investment focuses really on controlling the risk to the district. Any questions?
My question was, how do you guess the outside services going up by that amount?
We look at what we have in the pipeline for legal matters and knowing some of the business operations. For example, some of the construction contracts, we know what is going on with the construction. And so, we'll estimate that. So, we really do look at what we anticipate for the upcoming year. And then also based upon historical issues.
Ms. McCullough.
Well, did you expect to save more when we brought in deputy counsel? Or, I mean, I did.
We were, yes. Although, I think the more resources that you provide to staff, I think sometimes that they'll use it. But yes, in the long term, we do have plans for managing what is going to outside council and performing more in-house, yes.
So then, my second question would be, one of our concerns has always been contracts.
Yes.
And so, deputy counsel, that's, you know, that will still be work that is being outsourced.
Correct.
And I don't know what percentage of that, you said $100,000, but it's really close to $1 million, right? 9.900 and something?
The larger part of that, we're anticipating, we're anticipating different labor issues. So, that's more of the increase on what we're anticipating.
Oh, yeah, and that wasn't my question. My question was, what percentage of the outside council expenses are, or would you estimate to be associated with contract matters?
With contracts? Usually around $100,000.
Okay, that was the $100,000 that you mentioned?
Yes.
All right, so there's, that's kind of negligible in terms of additional staff.
For business contracts, for the labor contracts, we're not sure exactly because of board initiatives.
Right, no, I was asking business, because they're more consistent, the business contracts, the labor contracts, depending on the year. Thank you.
All right, now I just have to figure out how to get to the operations. All right, this is the preliminary FY '20 operations budget. And our department also focuses on fiscal and operational stewardship of the district's resources. Really, the operations department serves as an umbrella over the facilities team, the transportation team, and nutrition services team. The budget, as you will see, is much larger than our legal department budget, but there are significantly more employees involved, as well as other district-wide initiatives. There is, I want to point out on our budget summary, just a couple of line items. First, on the supplies, that really focuses on nutrition services. So, the decrease that you see there is due to better aligning our budget, because last year we began participating in, or buying from a different vendor, our food products and our paper products, and so realized a lot of savings. And also, we didn't participate in the way we anticipated in the citywide feeding program over the summer. So, we're better aligning our upcoming budget with what happened last year and what we anticipate coming up for the next year. The other piece is that we did not have any school buses budgeted in FY '19. We purchased them as part of an advance spend. So, we are including them in the FY '20 budget. So, that's another piece I wanted to point out. The total budget does increase by about $2.2 million from FY '19 to FY '20, and that's all for non-capital projects. For the capital project spends, you can see the different funds that we have there. And we're really spending down various bonds, as well as other committed funds. There's only a few that we haven't, for example, Nutrition Services does budget for some capital expenditures in the area of different equipment at some of the buildings and fixing some of the kitchens. The revenue is really focused on the nutrition services revenues. You can see that they do bring in funds. And then, we have a whole laundry list of contracts, but they really focus on service areas, for example, snow removal and the utilities, so keeping the lights on, and then also different food products. Our return on investment can really be summarized in a sentence. We safely deliver students to and from school in quality and placing them in quality learning environments while serving them nutritious lunches. So, any questions? And I do have our team here of experts that can also help answer questions.
Mr. Connor, you can go first.
Yep. A couple of things. On the food capital side, do we track that like we do roof and all the rest? As you had mentioned that...
Yes.
So, that's part of that same plan?
No, it's actually, it's tracked through Nutrition Services. It's a smaller amount, so let me go back to...
The only reason I'm asking is, I would think that you'd want anything related to facilities to be kind of tracked together, because it's really by building, right?
Right. So, do we track?
That would be just a suggestion.
We don't track it as part of the facilities management plan, I guess I should have clarified. Do we track the projects? Yes.
I mean, it's just, it's like, you've got the one that says, oh, we're going to have, you know, roofs that are, do it these four buildings this year, five the next, blah, 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 blah.
Oh, you're talking the life cycle. So, do we track the life cycle?
Yeah, life cycle, that's right.
Let me, you mentioned that. We are having a survey done of all of the kitchens. Renee is getting an inventory put together, and yes, we're going to be tracking the life cycle. Renee, did you want to add anything? Ms. Beauchamp is here.
It's not just about food. It's just essentially, because one of the questions has always been capital needs versus how we're going to budget for it. That's why I wondered, I mean, because it's really almost by building, isn't it? I mean, again.
Yes.
We're putting together a 20-year plan for equipment replacement plan. So, that's kind of, we're in the process right now. We're doing inventory, school by school, and we're tagging that and making sure they're asset-tagged. And then, we're looking at the longevity of how long, how much more life is in that equipment, so that we can project our spending in the future.
The only reason, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to add one thing. So, I've been working with different cabinet members and different departments that have these spending needs, it's five-year. So, I'm gathering all this information right now, so I can have a district five-year capital plan. And that'll just really put it in one place, so we can look at what our spends are for curriculum, our facilities, and we can budget for it appropriately.
So, I think it's good. So, that part of it, I think, makes a ton of sense to me. The only reason I'm bringing this up is that, as part of the development of principals, we're putting more on them, essentially for their budget for their buildings. And it would just seem to me if there was a building view of this, you know, through Forecast Five or whatever, then the principals would have visibility to how all this hits them over time. That's the only thing I was thinking on that. Then, my other question is, on the actual facilities planning side, do we have anything set aside potentially for us to go outside for any planning for facilities baked into this? Yes. Whatever name you want to give it, that's what I'm talking about.
The facilities assessment. No, we haven't captured that in our particular budget. We've been talking about it at Cabinet, and I think ultimately, a decision will be made whether or not to bring it to board this year or next.
Okay.
And that would be separate, so it might be an additional spend if, it all depends. We haven't made that decision yet.
Ms. McCullough.
Flash. 10 years in, and I still have questions about funds. Okay, so if you could tell, Fund '20 is?
Fund '20 is, that's the operations department, just overall, the facilities.
So, are the expenditures reduced because of our projects pretty much being done, or, I mean?
Yes, that's, all of these, they look a little odd, which is why we didn't capture them in the regular budget, because we're spending down committed funds as part of the facilities management plan. That's why it looks odd.
But that's captured in there, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense. What's, just for...
'19 is nutrition.
Yeah, yeah, what's '24? I skipped '19, I got that one.
'24 is this building. We set aside a separate fund for this building. Then, Fund '40 is transportation. '60 is our capital plan. So, those are dollars you can't, once they're put in that fund, you can't move them out of that fund. And Fund '90, it should be '90 and '94, where those are the life safety.
Okay.
And bonds.
Which one did you just, was it one? Hang on. What was '40 again?
'40 is transportation. So, they also have a small capital.
No, '40 is this building.
No, it's transportation.
'24 is this building.
'24 is this building.
So, oh, that was my question. '24, this building, rent, we were always supposed to put the rent toward this building. Is that how it's being funneled in the?
It is, yes. And just to clarify one thing, for Fund '20, we can put some capital expenditures in there, which I believe that we've, we have that part in there, but it really is our operations and maintenance of all of our facilities. That's what it's called, Operation Maintenance Fund. So, I've been realigning it more in Fund '60, where it's really capital spends. So, that's where we're seeing some differences as well.
Is that where you're seeing a lot of that million and a half is just the shift? Because...
Part of it's a shift, and then for Fund '60, that's where all of our bond proceeds have been, so we're spending those down. So, we're shifting some things for operations and maintenance. Fund '20 doesn't have, like, they're always in the negative. So, you know, we do that transfer at the end of the year to make them whole again. So, that's where that has been.
Okay, next slide. NSBP and NSLP. Could you just remind me what those are? You want to know too? I always figure somebody else has to want to know besides me.
And the lunch program and breakfast program. So, why, did we, do we just have less students participating in the breakfast program or anticipate that for 3/4 of $1 million less?
We did anticipate a higher percentage of students participating, looking at the state mandate of breakfast in the classroom. We're not there yet. We're still working on that. So, that, we had put this more in alignment to where we really are, and for next year, getting it closer to that.
So, the mandate is that we put breakfast in every classroom?
It's called after the bell, breakfast after the bell. And that is that one of their opportunities to have breakfast in the classroom. It's after the bell, and it's unfunded state mandate. So, we, they're giving us time to get things in place for improving breakfast.
And then, we'll have better exterminators then, too, when all the food is all over the floor in all the classrooms, right? And then, the drop in miscellaneous, what, these are, these are just an understanding, not a question. I trust that you've budgeted what you feel you need to budget.
The miscellaneous was, we had an opportunity, we were approached by the city to take over the summer feeding program of the city last year, providing the meals. And that did not come to fruition. So, that was where we were going to have the revenue based on that, so we dropped that down. We might still pick up some different sites from the city, so that's where we balance the $183,000 instead of the $549,000.
And I'll assume there's a reduction in expenses, because you're not planning on the food for those as well.
Correct.
So, that's not, and I'm just going to ask this. So, when is our snow and ice removal contract redone, coming back up again? Thank you.
There is still, I believe, two years left, but on the snow and ice removal contract. We are reevaluating one of those contractors, though, and more than likely will put that portion out. Correct.
We have something in the contract that says if they don't meet our minimum requirements, so, because we have good legal and they do that. Thank you.
Mr. Rollins? I think Mr. Connor asked this, but I want to make sure that this is what, we're talking about the same thing. So, that life cycle repair and replacement plan that we've been talking, not we, I've been talking about for probably six years now, we still, we, yeah. We, you know, when I was chair of the Operations Committee, back when we had an Operations Committee, and I was asking for that. So, that's, that's still not ready to come to the board, and it's still not part of the budget.
No, we've already presented that to the board, and also, we put it, I think the question was asked last time. We had presented it to the board, and you'd asked whether or not it was available online. So, we made sure the links are on our website, on the facility's website page with the life cycle. So, what Nutrition Services is doing is looking at the actual kitchen equipment, so the stoves, dishwashers, all of that in the, in the actual kitchen, and then putting together a 20-year plan of replacement.
I thought Mr. Connor started with the Nutrition Services, but I thought he asked the more expansive question at the end.
Oh, he had asked about, he had asked about the facilities assessment condition report that we'd also presented at the same time. So, what that would look like is having an entity actually come in to all of the buildings and do an assessment to determine how much things, they'll delve in much deeper in there and determine how much replacement cost would be, for example, to go along with the life cycle. So, I believe Mr. Phillips can explain it much better than I can, so I'll bring him back up.
So, if we're talking about the facilities condition assessment, that is something that we talked about during the facilities update, the Committee of the Whole in January. And that would be bringing a third-party engineering and architectural firm in to evaluate our building envelopes, our roofs, our mechanical systems, which would include our plumbing systems, to evaluate where we're at within those lives. We do currently have a life cycle report that has been generated in-house that includes roofs and HVAC equipment and things of that nature. We just don't have the engineering expertise to maybe get deeper into those systems.
So, okay, so the question I've got then, so we've got the life cycle report. Is it used for budgeting? And is there anything that we're showing on the life cycle report that we should be doing next year that we haven't budgeted for?
Yes.
And like, how much? And what are those things?
So, we will present at the April 9th meeting, the excess spend similar to what we did last year to incorporate and modify the existing facilities management plan to add additional projects. With that, we'll give you the entire list of all of the projects that were both requested, as well as the life cycle, the ones that we have on there, but that we are deferring. So, the ones, and I believe it was around $100,000, but that didn't make the list.
Life cycle? Oh, it was well...
Oh, it was more? Okay, so, I, we can get that to you, but that'll be presented at the next meeting. So, you can see the ones that, they primarily dealt with sidewalks and driveways, is my recollection.
And we do have a list, when we get to the tentative budget, which Michelle Stather's going to present, we do have a list of the items. So, what we did, our process is to remind the committee that we wanted everyone to have a flat budget, with the exception of salaries for our salary increases. Then, after that, we took the priorities that people have brought forward, and we went through our Shark Tank, as I call it, pitch, to see how that worked out. And we prioritize facilities in that as well. So, you're going to see that list in just a few minutes of the asks that actually made it in that were health and life safety. So, those are, I mean, we have, we're going to be short, so that's part of the conversation. But we have $2.8, is that correct, Michelle? We have $2.8 million that Facilities has on their list right now, and we can fund $1.8 of that right now.
But I guess what I'm still not sure on, so you're talking about requests or asks, but did everything on the list that was on the life cycle list is showing, hey, this is the year that we should be replacing the flooring? This is the year we should be replacing the asphalt? Did that even get to the request stage?
Yes, it did. It's on the list, but it's not on the list that made it, that's making it forward.
Okay, so...
And we're presenting the entire list to you, so you can see everything in full transparency. It includes the life cycle.
Okay. On the buses, so, you know, unless the cost of buses went up, that looks about, like about 30 buses to me. Is that how many we're buying?
We are purchasing some smaller vans as well as buses, so that they can be at the schools. So, Mike, did you want to step up? Mr. Slyf is here, and he can explain the total purchase.
The school bus portion of that is 22 buses. And in the budget, we actually figured about $100,000. We opened bids, so it might be just a little bit less. So, there's 22 of those, and then there are eight of the small white activity buses that you see out and about. And that'll help with coaches and everybody. Right now, they rent vans from Enterprise and go to different events that we can't cover. So, we'll have two white activity buses at each high school, so that Jefferson or whoever the coach can drive and take them, so.
What's the cost of the school buses now?
They're around $98,000.
After trade-in?
That's the before-trade-in price. The trade-ins, I think, were $72,000 or $7,800.
Because the numbers I remember working with were like $84,000 to $87,000 before.
Yep.
But that, so, are we trading in buses?
Yes. We're trading in 22 buses.
Okay. So, would we, shouldn't we be budgeting based on the after-trade-in price? I'm just trying to figure out how you got to this number.
The, we took the total number, not guaranteeing our, either our trade-in price, because we didn't know what we were going to get out of them at the time. And then, on the multi-function, we don't trade in anything, and so.
And?
We're also, we just got our letter for replacing six buses for, of the old, old 2002s, which they're going to give us $120,000 for those six buses, to scrap them.
Okay. There's a, this is not a question for you, this is a question for Mrs. Holdley. There's a, there's some reference in here, there's a line item to tree removal, which just triggered me wanting to ask the question. We had an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Rockford that included some tree services. Are we still using that intergovernmental agreement, or have we fully used it up?
We have fully used it up.
Okay.
According to their accounting.
What about our accounting? We don't, we don't have the accounting?
I think we've lost some of the historical knowledge.
Okay. And then, I was just curious on the, somewhere there's another line I just wanted to ask about. So, where is that? It's in the operations budget summary excluding capital projects. There's just another line that's about $900,000. Just, what is that?
Sure, that includes various items, such as the facilities supplies and things like that that they use. I do have the list.
I'll just, I won't take up people's time. Can you just maybe send it to me?
Okay.
Thanks.
Michael, I have one more question, because this one is asked by a community member who lives on the street behind me. And she wants to know always, when we buy school buses, whether or not, which, Michael, there you go, yeah, Michael, okay, about whether or not they, these new buses will have seat belts on them. So, I'm just going to ask the question.
Currently, no. And when we do start adding those in, once it becomes probably a federal mandate, which it looks like it may, that'll increase our bus price another $8,000 to $10,000, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions for Ms. Holdley? Well, Mrs. Dutton is next, I bet.
Hello, good evening. So, I am here, along with my team, to represent the budget asks for the Ed Services Division, which is a large division. We mostly support Goals One and Three of this district strategic plan, so growth and achievement and optimal climate, in particular Strategies One, Two, Four, and Five, which all have to do with curriculum alignment, differentiation, social-emotional learning, and facilities and technology. Like all the reports that have come before you, we were tasked with determining whether to continue or abandon all of our major expenses. And so, as part of assessing the situation, we'll take a look at Ed Services as a division. This is our... This is our top-level org chart, but what you may not know is that all of these departments, in some, represent 164 positions here in the central office. So we are a good portion of the employees that make up this office, and in total, with Grants and Fund 10, we have about an $80 million investment in supports for schools. Here's a summary of some of the things across the breadth of our division that we offer to schools. I won't read them all to you, I'll try to sum them up, but in short, we increase opportunities for students. We do that through consistent and aligned curriculum. We do that through embedded supports, wraparound services. We do that through itinerant positions. We touch every family through early childhood screening. We also support with translation. We support with grant dollars, summer programming, you name it, we support it, basically. In addition to that, I'm gonna back up once, in addition to that, because we also house IT and IS, we're also responsible for the IT infrastructure and the systems that make the whole district run. What I've done really is just provided a high-level overview, but I do have each of my executive directors here tonight, if you'd like to ask more specific questions on any particular budget. Our salaries and benefits, as you can see here, are showing a variance of about $1 million. That is not a variance for increased positions, I wanna make sure that's very clear. We actually only have one or two positions that are new asks. Instead, it's the way that we have been budgeting and the way we made a shift this year. We shifted a lot of the central office-held positions, where we budgeted for them from the central office, that really hit schools, back out to schools. And some of that was a smooth process, some of it we're still learning from, and so we're still going back and correcting those things. This million-dollar variance can be explained in a couple of different ways. Number one is unassigned paras and unassigned teachers that we discovered were previously budgeted at a lower rate. Secondly, we had the increase for non-bargaining staff, plus steps and lanes for bargaining staff. And then finally, we recognized that this year in FY '20, we have six social workers hitting the central office budget, whereas last year we had one. So there are a smattering of reasons that add up to that $1 million across our 164 employees and eight departments. Our purchase services, you'll see, is going down rather significantly. That's either from ending contracts or reducing reliance on contracts. Our supplies is increasing significantly, that should not be a surprise. We are in year four of our district strategic plan for curriculum alignment, and everybody needs resources, instructional resources. We've been able to project over the last couple of years that this was going to be a big year for us. And what we'll see now, we'll sustain this for one more year, and then we're gonna see a sharp decline in the dollars that we'll be requesting on an annual basis. We really needed to bring everybody up to speed with high-quality resources that align with new standards. Our non-capital has a slight increase that's mostly in technology. I've broken that technology out in the next slide, because it is the largest bucket outside of special education. Our capital is down slightly. Our other miscellaneous looks funny, because miscellaneous at $6 million seems like a lot of miscellaneous. What's hitting in that line is more of our tuition for therapeutic day for a variety of programs, and so if you'd like to dig deeper into what that represents, Jen Lawrence is prepared to do that as well. And then I was asked not to show just the Fund 10, but also our grant-funded expenditures, so that we get a fuller picture of our programming. And so what we did is we just pulled that all together. We report kind of throughout the year on more specifics, and certainly we can provide that if you'd like, but our total for grant-funded expenditures is just over $40 million. We won't know FY '20 for sure until the state releases all that information, which happens at different times throughout the year, depending on various circumstances, but what we can project is that we will stay flat. Worst-case scenario, we would come in funded at 90% of that total. That brings our total FY '20 investment through grants and Fund 10 to just over $77 million, with a million-dollar variance. I broke out our technology budget, because that's where a lot of our large dollars are hitting, and it's also a department that is different than the rest of Ed Services. And as I mentioned, it's the department that really makes us run as a district. So you can see there's a slight decrease in salaries, a slight decrease also in purchase services, a slight increase in supplies, slight increase in non-capital. Capital stays the same, and a very slight increase in other miscellaneous, but all in all, we're spending just slightly less. And what you'll learn through various reports, through the board update, et cetera, is that even though we're seeing our budget go down here, we're being very smart about our investments and looking for the best way to make streamlined and efficient services out of our contracts. There are a lot of contracts that hit across our eight departments. This list is really meant to be kind of the big picture for each of our departments, so I certainly won't read through all of them, but you can see here, we have just a few contracts for the bilingual department. They are mostly for translation and professional development. We also have our ESL cohort, which has yielded great results for us. You heard about that PDSA in the fall. College and career readiness, we do have slight variance in incubator, and that's because of our startup cost and then our maintenance cost, and you heard about that PDSA a couple of weeks ago, I tuned in from home. Curriculum has several slides, and you'll see that these are loose, these are projections, because our curriculum leadership teams have not gotten to that part of the process yet, where they follow the protocol for selecting an instructional resource. What we know from our years of experience is how to predict a cost and what seems reasonable, but what we don't know yet is precisely who the vendor will be and precisely what the cost will be. So these are all projections. Things that you see that have a variance down are the difference between the initial investment and then the annual maintenance. So there are several slides here that you can see, and if you just kind of take a look at those three slides, you can see that the curriculum department is busy. Our CLTs are busy. These are all of the teams that are in the selection process now for this coming school Early childhood has a very small Fund 10. As you know, they are mostly grant-funded, you heard about that also in a PDSA in the fall. So we have two major expenses for early childhood. One is for our assessment instrument, and the other is for transportation. Improvement and innovation is our grants department. We also have a very small amount of money here dedicated to assessment, mostly that is MAP, but also the College Board for SAT and PSAT. Special education is more complicated, because our contracts mostly hit when we have unfilled positions that we budgeted for in the salary line. So what happens is, as we progress through the school year, and if positions are unfilled, dollars are budgeted in the salaries, and they're moved over on an as-needed basis to the contracts where we need them. So you can see that FY '19 was our actual expense at this point in time. FY '20 really is a projection. And again, if you'd like to ask more questions about that, Jen is here to respond. And then in our tech services, we have lots of contracts that support the business and educational systems across our district, and there are a few slides here that you can peruse. I won't speak in too much detail, but this is mostly hosting services, maintenance, renewal, At the end of the day, the question is, what do we get in return for our 40-plus, or $40 million Fund 10 and additional $40 million in grants? And the answer to that can be summed up with dynamic and coordinated services to schools. Dynamic in terms of, we are able to pivot and adjust and realign and combine funding sources to help schools meet their needs and to solve problems, learning problems for students. And then also, part of our department is to provide the technology infrastructure, both to protect our assets, including our data, and enrich education for students and for teachers. And with that, I'll take any questions that you have.
Mr. Rollins?
So on special ed, there's some pretty hefty increases being budgeted here, I mean, the biggest of which is the therapeutic day residential contracts, which is both a big dollar number and a big percentage increase, so what is, what's driving that? And this is the expense, is there any, any corresponding revenue from the state associated with that?
There is revenue. Last year, at the end of last year, we received $3 million, let me find the right page, $3,100,000 in revenue back from therapeutic day. This year so far, we've had 1.8 million back in revenue. Reimbursement.
On an expenditure of 4.6?
Correct.
So, so why do we think that we're gonna be up to 6.5 million next year?
That's just what we budget, based on previous years, that's what I budgeted, I've kept it at 6.5 million. We have pulled kids back from therapeutic day, we've had some pretty big results from that. We have about 120 kids in therapeutic day, and there were about two, close to 200 in previous years. We've been very fiscally responsible, I believe, to be putting kids, more kids at RLA, Chan Light, ILC, due to discipline, where in the past, students that were removed for discipline were ending up in therapeutic day settings, and then they were not returning when their expulsions were over.
Is the 4.6 for fiscal year '19, is that just year-to-date?
Correct.
Is that just our expenditures year-to-date?
Year-to-date.
So that's not full year?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Nor is the reimbursement yet.
And then the contracted paras, the CNAs, that number's going up significantly, too. It's not quite, but almost doubling.
That's, that's what our contract is, a three-year contract, and so we've used to date, where is the front page? To date, we've used about half of that.
But you had budgeted a similar amount this year?
Correct. We have a three-year budget of 981, so 981 every year, and we have up to so many CNAs that we, that we can use, and so far, we've only spent, we've spent 544.
Okay, thanks.
Segal.
On Slide 8, you had, under salaries and benefits, you had, use the term unassigned teachers and paras?
Too far, Jen.
Sorry.
Stay up there by me.
Right now, so, and again, this is what has been done in the past, I'm past practice, we, we budget for, we over-budget for teachers and paraprofessionals when students move in or move out. We can reallocate those without having to advertise, the allocation is already there, it's already in the budget. So for example, this summer, we had about 200 elementary special ed students enter our district, and so that would have been difficult to then increase allocations, ask for more money, et cetera. In the past, we've used all of those allocations, and currently, we have 8.9 unassigned teachers that are vacant, that we have not needed to use, and we have 13 unassigned paras that we have not needed to use. Meaning that we continually look at our allocations and make sure that we, our class sizes are appropriate, and that our paraprofessional time is used efficiently at the school level.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. McCollum.
So I understand, as long as you're up there. So do you, did you budget more than you used last year? Because we don't have numbers from '18, that would have been really helpful on these lists for a comparison, so...
In terms of the teachers and paras?
Yeah.
Yes, well, and that's, we found some, when we had looked previous to me coming in, there was a set amount for teachers and paras, and when they used to swap them around, they would say two paras for one teacher, and that doesn't equal itself out. We learned that in my first year, and so we've allocated for the teacher's salary within the unassigned teacher and for the paras' salary in the unassigned paras, so that we are within our budget limits.
Right, but that's because you escalated the budget in anticipation of additional students coming in, based on...
Well, and our enrollment is up, so we were about 4,300 special ed students, we're at like 4,500 special ed students right now. We can't, and it's hard, because you can't anticipate who's coming, and you can't anticipate the level of need either.
All right. Tim, I'm surprised you didn't ask this one. Here's my question about early childhood, thank you, Jen, I have your...
You're welcome.
Oh, you know what, the CNA piece, we're bringing them in, we just pay for the ones we have here, even though we're budgeted at 981, we only pay for...
Yes, ma'am, only the ones that we, that we only pay as they...
Do you know what we did the year before? You said this is gonna be the third year of the contract.
I can look, I can look and find out.
It's, all right. I'm sure we'll take that into account when we have a contract moving forward. But, Kim, quick question, the 245 on the transportation for early childhood, so that's what was budgeted this, next year, that's what's budgeted this year, when did we go up? Didn't we go up a couple of years ago, or has it, how long has that been, 245? It hasn't changed?
It hasn't changed. We've been level-funded, I've left that at level funding since we started doing that probably four years ago, four or five years ago.
And is there any reimbursement from the state for that?
No.
There is not, right? That's total our expense.
And that's just additional support, the grant really pays for most of the transportation. In addition, our Head Start partners are transporting about 400 students as well.
But not all students are transported?
No.
So how do you prioritize who gets, that are not Head Start, that are not special ed?
So our preschool expansion grant has our highest-needs kids in that program, they're transported, our homeless kids are transported. We have a team of administrators that look at need, our family support staff goes out and works with families to try to find alternative methods to getting kids to school, and we look at, you know, switching from an AM to a PM session, things like that, but it really is based on need.
Okay, and I ask the question more because there are people who apply for our programs and say, well, why can't I get a bus?
Yeah, so it really is based on need, and we look for our highest-needs students first, so we do use our weighted risk form as well, and just consider each case as a team.
So on top of the 245, how much more is spent on transportation that is covered by both grants and the Head Start program, would you say?
I could get you the exact amount, but it's probably, total transportation's probably about 1.2 million out of the grants.
Okay, so like...
So 1.2 million out of the grants, and then the...
In addition to this?
In addition to the 245.
Plus the Head Start.
Plus the Head Start, yeah.
Okay, so we are comparatively one percentage of that, I was, what I was looking at, thank you.
Mr. Connor.
Yeah, a couple of general comments that, I should have also said while Mrs. Holdley was here on operations, I know that we had talked at one point, talking about percentages we do, if you will, for overhead, he needs to listen to this, I'm sorry. That we were going to do comparisons with administrative costs, right, and other kinds of things compared to other districts, and I think when I looked through some of these, what hits me is, oh, how proportional are we to other districts? And I looked at Ed Services, and that was a question, and so I wondered if we were doing just the administrative parts, or were we, when we do that, we're gonna be looking at other large-cost operational Ed Services and so...
For Miss Yar to answer that, I know she's been working very hard to nail down the conceptual thing, if I'm hearing you correctly, Mr. Connor, is essentially as the pot, if you look at how the pie is broken down, what percentage are we spending on the district office versus investing in our schools?
So I like to use something that is comparable throughout the whole state, so if we look at our AFR, ISBAFR, which we submit, there are certain function codes that are overhead, so I would be part of that. So where I, my salary is charged is overhead, it's the function code. So all these function codes are gathered in our ISBAFR towards the very last page of that, so you can, you can look at it there, but it's 12.24%, and when you're looking at...
Administration.
Administration.
Okay.
So, I mean, the rule of thumb for not-for-profits is around 12%, so we're right in that range. As expenditures go down, as budgets go down, of course, that has been skewed over the last eight years, when you're trying to see if you want to contribute to a not-for-profit, you might look at, you know, might want not to donate money if it's well past that 12%, which is a good threshold. So I like to use that. We are also being able to compare with the ESSA reporting that's happening this year for fiscal year '19, we are all required in the state to comply with ESSA reporting, so that's getting all of our expenses out to the schools. So every district should be able to do that. The only bad thing about this is the state has not mandated a certain way of doing it, so it's gonna be a little bit harder to compare, but that... So it's going to be a little bit harder to compare about that. But there ISBAFR, if everything's coded correctly, that is a really good percentage to use for that. But we will have additional information with the ESSA reporting, again, at the end of the fiscal year 19. But everybody will be required to report that way. So in November, we'll have all of that data, which I can compare in Forecast 5, which I use, and I'll use it, I'll compare it there.
You answered my question before I had to make the comment, which is of course, that I know it's a shocker, but I don't really look at those codes at the end, just saying.
Yeah.
So I think it would be helpful to have a chart or two of the comparisons, you know, and if, if these function codes are what's driving it, that's fine.
It is.
But I think, you know, my point's still the same, that we know administrative and as close as we can come to Ed Services and Operations and so forth, you know, and then what the school bases are, just so we have that. That's something we've talked about. And if we have it in a digestible form, that, that would be wonderful. And if it were Forecast 5, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Because then eventually, hopefully, we'll have access.
All of the AFRs get loaded into the Forecast 5 module throughout the state. And so once they're all loaded, then I can pull from there very, very easily and do other comparisons, which I, you know, went over with you a little bit. But really, the AFR, at the very end, which probably people don't really make it to the end of the AFR, but if you did, there is a nice summary that actually does like district overhead. So if you, you know, have time, you want to look at that last page, go ahead. It's not bad.
I, I'm sure it's not.
Yeah, but I'll get you, I'll get you a nice graph.
I highly recommend a day, just a little form.
Yeah.
The other note probably for you is, I would ask that on these slides and all, and I know there were some exceptions, I'm sure there's some reasons, but to have the same format, and especially if it's, you know, this year, you know, next year variance, and then I would add a percentage, just because on a couple of these, I actually had to go out of my calculator, so, so since I'm slow on that, it would be great. You know, a lot of these are like small. So that, that was just an overall. Then I wrote a couple specifics. On the supplies, does that include, and I tried to look through the curriculum thing, does that include paper versus electronic in that supply side? It kind of sounded like you were saying that, I wasn't sure what was included.
It's all, it's all inclusive for both the digital and print.
Paper, okay. Right. Because I'm still, I think, I'm still very interested in the shelf life of that and you've kind of commented that, you know, you said, well, we're, we expect that number to be very different in like a year, I think is what you said. So some of that.
And every, every license has a varying span of three, five to six years, just depending.
I think the point that I made months ago was that we kind of understand where we're at in the curriculum and the electronic materials, that's all. And the other thing, this is more of a general comment, but full disclosure, Mr. Bartell and I have talked about this, is looking into potential of shared services with other municipalities, if you will, whether it's county board or whomever. And I think when it comes to IT, really, a number of things around facilities, snow removal and lawn or whatever, I'm not saying for this coming year, but I think I'd like to plant the seed, we've said this several times, you know, do we have opportunities? Because we did join the consortium, you know, because we wanted to reduce cost. And I would say now is a good time because we're budgeting, is to think for the next cycle, are there serious things that we need to talk about? Because a number of these were really reductions and it seemed like contracts and other things really came to bear, so could we apply that same principle? So that, that would be, it was noticeable here because obviously, it's got the IT contract or costs. The other thing was, we have, and whether you show it or not is another thing, we have so many contracts. We have any, and we've talked a little bit about this, success measures by those contracts, like what we expect, and I can't remember what you said, so I apologize.
Yes, we do. And, and those are mostly captured in the PDSA. So in every PDSA for a contract, that's going to come up for renewal, because this was kind of year one, you got the plan and the due. Moving forward, when it comes to you for renewal, you'll have the study and the act, which will be a report on the metrics that were laid out in the plan and due portion.
Thought that was the answer, but I wanted to, I couldn't remember and I saw those contracts, so. Great, thanks.
I just wanted to add one thing. Mrs. Duttman had talked about the three to five-year contracts. So with the curriculum, the online curriculum, we only budget for that one year at a time. So we're grabbing those as they come through. So that'll smooth out that cycle, so we've been working on that, really for the past year. So that will really smooth out those ups and downs that we have.
Dixon.
Yes, on page 19, I was wondering, what is West Communication? And then you have like school messengers, what is all of that?
Okay.
These are all communication contracts, but I'll let Jason speak to them.
Okay.
So the West Communication School Messenger contract, that is for our notification system that sends out school cancellations.
Okay.
Mobile calls.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's, really, I just wanted to know what that was. And then on page 18.
We got our money's worth this year.
Right, we got our money's worth. And then on page 18, I noticed that the contract before speech, it's 300,000 now, but we project 600,000? I was trying.
So I'll go ahead and take a stab and you just correct me, okay? So what you see in the first column is FY19, that's actual dollars that we've spent this year. But we like to reach for like the top in our projection for the next year, to make sure that we are covered essentially for the whole year, if we were to fill all those vacancies.
That would be, what about psychologists?
Same.
Yeah, because it has zero. It's zero.
Oh, I'm sorry. That one I might have to leave to you on.
This is the first year that we've had a contract for psychologists. So that was a .2 position that someone filled.
Oh, so we have, so it's filled?
So it's filled. And we have three interns that we've offered positions to, so we anticipate being full with, in our psychology department next year.
But you have a zero figure for the budget for next year?
That's for contracts. I don't anticipate contracting for psychs.
Thank you.
That's it?
Yeah. And that's budgeted in the salary. So if the position is vacant, we move the money over into contracts.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ms. Duttman? Cue, great job. Ms. Berg, I think you're next.
Okay. That's okay. Good evening. All right. I am presenting the preliminary budget for the schools team. We represent multiple departments, schools and school supervision, special programs, SSAL, that's our student services, alternative learning, Angela Hight Carter's department, fine arts and athletics. Our primary focus is on goals one, three and four. We've had a lot of new initiatives this year, a lot of changes with evidence-based funding from the state. And our Illinois Power plans that you've approved back in February have also made some changes to the work we've been doing and I'll be reflecting in the presentation. The goal with evidence-based funding from the state is to make sure we're more equitable with resources based on student needs and shifting as much as possible to the schools based on their needs for academic support. One of the things we were able to do is just do a blanket increase across all schools for $600,000. And I will give you a real, a better summary that you wouldn't be able to see on a PowerPoint, so I'll give this to you when I'm done, on how each school was increased in different line items. So I think that'll be helpful. So anyway, $600,000 was spread out to the high schools based on their enrollment. You've seen that in the past. We use a per-student number multiplied by the enrollment to get a total budget for the school. We increased that between 25 and $30 per grade level and you'll see that again on that spreadsheet. We also increased funding based on poverty levels. We had two tiers of poverty, our high poverty and moderate poverty, for a total of $1 million. Back in February, I think February 28th is when we brought all the work plans together for board approval for the Illinois Power money, which was a total of about $2 million. We also, this year, have been working on multiple incentives to help schools get creative and support their innovation at the building level. So middle school level, some extra funding was available for teaming, try to break our grade, grade levels into teams. So teachers are talking about the same students in the core content areas as they work with those kids. At the high school level, we want to get more purity with our academies, which means having more kids in the, in the four academies represented in a class, try to get upwards of 80% of students from the same academy in the same class. And then our innovation zones, which was our elementary initiative, which we bargained with the REA and worked closely to get more services and support to students with the elementary schools. Additionally, we added another $316,000 to the schools for our multi-classroom leaders, our reach teachers and aspiring teachers. And these are initiatives that obviously impact academics, but are also intended to help us with recruiting efforts and stabilizing staffing. So here's a pie chart summarizing the slides I just shared with you. This is a slide that illustrates what we call our student-based dollars. It's the new increases plus Title I, basically is what you're seeing here. And the Title I is a big slice of the pie, as you can see. These are dollars that are available at the building level and give a lot of flexibility to schools to provide supplemental services. So our school spend, if you look at all the school budgets and add those together, you'd get about $239 million of our budget. I think we're 430 million if you include the flow-through money, but, so 239 is going to schools. And as we've talked about before, we are in the people business. So you can see 95% of that is salary benefits at the school level. Some of, just a summary of some of the new spending that's happening in the schools with their dollars. Professional development, they're, they're working on building existing programs and supporting existing programs and new, and new programs throughout the spring and summer. A lot of the PD was the Illinois Power money. Technology, Chromebooks, iPads, behavior sports specialists, BIS is another behavior support for elementary and we are adding those to some middle schools. Instructional coaches is primarily elementary at this point, but we're getting good results there. And I talked a little bit about, about teaming and tutoring and purity and also tutoring, adding more tutoring for students is also part of the increased spending. This is an overview of the, of the team I'm representing tonight in the org chart. I have at the central office level, five direct reports and then they serve other departments and I also, I also supervise 10 principals. This is the central office support for elementary schools. You see a variance here of $80,000 and it, as was discussed earlier with Ed Services, a lot of the variances aren't new positions or reductions, they are reallocation, making sure that the dollars are represented in the buildings. So for elementary schools, we've shifted aspiring teachers out of this budget and into the building budgets. My budget, you see an increase in variance and that's a shift of a position from continuous improvement to the schools team with Susan Fumo moving over. These next three slides are really, I guess, for amusement only, they're not, they're just to give you a real snapshot of what a school budget looks like and how it's dispersed. We just picked the average elementary school, average middle school, average high school to give you some context into the numbers. So an elementary school is a $3 million operation, a little over $3 million. Again, a majority of that is in salary and benefits. Your middle schools are about a $7 million organization and your high schools are about $13 million in budgeting. The SSAL department has some core areas that drive their budget. I don't want to read this to you, but we do, you know, do support around student discipline and truancy. SILE was formerly known as ALE, was formerly known as in-school suspension. That's, that's, that's been a modification by the state and Senate Bill 100. And then also social intervention educational programs as a modification due to Senate Bill 100 as well. There's a big variance in this budget and that is, again, shifting, not, not reducing as much, it's shifting resources. We shifted our truancy specialists and some BISs out to the building budgets from, from the central office budget. Increase in purchase services was related to some contractual shifts and then there was YSN, part of a YSN contract that's not new, but was in a different department that should have been in SSAL all along. Special programs has a budget and they obviously support our five special programs with curriculum support, PD, promotion, auditions, testing, branding, you name it. This budget's pretty stable. I think the variance in salaries and benefits is around a differential, they get, a couple differentials that got moved out to a building. Fine arts, and you'll get a more detailed presentation on fine arts and athletics in a few weeks here, but fine arts highlights here are continued increase in enrollment. Doing a great job getting more students and those who've been on the board for a while remember adding the seventh period day and that really triggered a lot of the work here. But also making sure we have equitable resources across the district and focus on teacher recruitment and retention and a lot of community partnerships, as we saw on NBC, if you had a chance to see the Band Grandpa special, that was really cool. Overall, 49% increase in enrollment over the last three years for our fine art students in their elective classes. Budget here is, is pretty stable. The variance is some support staffing with Emily Traub leaving. We split that position into two positions, one for fine arts, one for athletics. Our athletics department, this is Matt Parker's budget. Again, their goal is to increase participation. We know that when kids are connected through athletics or fine arts, they're more engaged as students and do better academically and socially. A lot of good things happening in our athletics department. Budget is again, pretty stable. Overall, our return on investment is professional growth of our employees, retaining our quality staff, extracurricular programming, safe learning environments and special programs. Any questions?
You had a list on, I think, slide 15. You mentioned technology. So are these separate costs? Ones in Mrs. Duttman's, the technology? You have, under new spending, you have technology and all I'm wondering is, is this reflected in your budget part or is all?
It's probably a little bit of both. There's probably some that is specific to a school, I can think of a couple of schools that came out of their building budget and then there are some that are supported centrally.
I, I think this is one then, I, I wondered if that might not be the case and then maybe this is for Mrs. Yar. this is for Mrs. Yar to say, you know, one of my complaints about fund accounting is exactly, some of these costs are split, and so can we see them as one technology category?
You can correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Vosberg, but this is what we're representing for the new spending, was what are the schools doing with their new money? What did they choose to do? So they chose to do these things. These are new things that they've, with their flexible funding that they have. So yes, I can pull out technology by an account code for that any, really, any time.
And I'm not trying to pick on technology, because I feel the same for facilities and other things. I mean, these are really, you'd consider them part of the, if this were a corporation insured services or of the like, and you'd allocate it out, and I just, I think it is helpful sometimes to see. That's why, you know, I mean, some of these are really identifiable.
I think this one is really specific. This is, I mean, it's a very general category, but I think what we're referring to here is more clear than we're probably presenting it. This is with those discretionary dollars, one of the things schools buy with that are, as Dr. Vosberg said in his presentation, we buy iPads or we buy Chromebooks. Really, in this part of the presentation, that's what we mean by technology, or some type of student-used devices.
I think, and I totally get that, I think the only part I would say is, all that's supported by the IT department, right? I mean, we have to have contracts with it. All I want to do, I think one of the goals, is that if we have assets or services or whatever that we're sharing.
The needs are verified, and the purchasing is all done through our IT department.
I'm not arguing at all what you're doing, I'm just saying from the accounting standpoint, sometimes it's really good to see what some of these impacts are. And frankly, that's why I keep bugging, and I'm sure Mrs. Detman will eventually throw something at me on the electronic versus paper, but I mean, it's really the same issue when you think about it, right? Because now you've got something that's electronic, it's got to be supported, and you'd kind of like to know, you know, what's my allocation or my?
And we can, I mean, we can grab just about anything out of our, I mean, if the coding is correct, of course, you can get anything out of the system and analyze just about anything. So we can, we can really do that. One thing that we should think about, when Dr. Vosberg was going through the presentation, we're talking about all these things that we've sent out to schools, like all this coding is now at the schools. So that's part of that management in general bucket that we talk about, the admin costs, what's our overhead. Well, we wouldn't really have a good number on that, you know, if we wanted to, what does the district office cost? So we really have to wait, I mean, that's an example of all the things that have been shifted to the schools, so that way we can grab that number. But I just thought that was just a good, we're seeing it now with the detail. And then at the end, you'll see, like, you're seeing the detailed budgets correct, you know, right now, but we'll roll this all up when their last budget presentation. So we roll it all up, and then we'll actually have the highlights at that point, but.
And if I might say so, for full transparency, Mrs. Yar and I have talked a great deal about Forecast 5, which is the tool that she's got with the reporting and giving us, the board members, all access. So that's one thing that is kind of a repeated theme in all this, is to make it easier for us and the public to see what the numbers are.
Mr. Rollins? If you explain this, I apologize, I missed it. So what's the difference between Slides 17 and 19? 17 is called Elementary Schools Budget Summary, and 19 is Elementary School Budget Summary.
This is basically Joanne Kirschbaum's budget and the central office support for elementary schools.
So she's not part of your deputy superintendent budget?
No, she has her own budget.
Okay, so those numbers are in addition to your deputy superintendent budget?
And then, this is a typical elementary school budget, what it would look like. Can't remember the specific school. We just wanted to give a school that was kind of in the middle as far as enrollment, to put some context into what a school budget would, how they would spend their money.
And so the other slides, there are elementary school budget, middle school budget, those salaries and benefits, that's the administrators, the assistants, the secretaries, staff? Other than the teachers, or the?
No, that includes teachers. Yeah, that's all adults that work in the building.
Oh, this is like your average?
This is one school. This might be East High School.
Oh, okay.
And I think this is, Michelle, do you remember which schools we picked? Lincoln and Johnson.
Okay.
That's what their budget would, that's what the numbers would be in their budget.
All right.
Yes, on Page 23. I heard you said the benefits. You're saying it's switched from central location to the buildings. Is that who we're talking about? High schools, or are we talking about?
So for that department, the truancy specialists are mostly in high schools, but they do have some at other grade levels. And then the BIS is mostly elementary. So those positions were in the SSAL budget, and we put them out to where they work in the building, because of evidence-based funding, we want to show what support we're spending at each school. It's part of the state initiative is to be equitable in your funding and show, like, what are you spending at each school to make sure that it's fair and equitable across your district and across the state.
Right, so you, in other words, you just give it, you put the funds to the building, and the building, okay, got it. I guess one other question as far as that is, so we just apply them with the funds from this, or just from, or from other funds?
We're just moving the funding on paper from a budget, her budget downtown, to the school's budget. The people are the same. It's the same level of service they've always had. It's just where you're putting the budget number. We're going to put it in the school now where they're working.
I'm just curious, so, I think this sort of gets to something Mr. Connor was talking about too, about it's hard to get your arms around making sure that all the money is reported in one location. So on the Athletics Budget Summary, I'm just curious what those numbers are. Does that include all the stipends, the coach stipends and differentials, or is that part of Fund 10? I'm just curious.
This would include mainly central office staffing, and I know there's a handful of differentials, I want to say, I can get detail from finance, but I think the robotics differentials were centralized, and...
So some are centralized and some are not?
There's a few that are, as we've added them. I'm not sure why they did that. I think it was partly because they wanted to get them in the budget first and then see if there's interest at the schools. They wanted to create, see, most of those differentials are going to be used based on student demand, but we want to carve it out in the budget first and then see where we can get student demand, depending on the school, it could vary. So, but most of that is going to be centralized staffing budget.
What about like transportation, then? So, transportation for athletics or fine arts?
Yeah, the buildings, the buildings have their own transportation budget. Some of that would be supplemented, so if a team makes it to state, then the central, then the district will pay for that. If a team qualifies to go downstate, like East High's basketball team, the district will support that financially, because it's not something we typically budget for at the building level. But the day-to-day activities are typically out of the building budget.
Mrs. Yar, are you next?
Good evening. Hi. So, tonight I will be presenting on our tentative FY '20 budget. As we've heard all of our department cabinet members give their presentations on their parts and pieces, tonight I'll be rolling it all together for our first look of a tentative budget for 2020. And we're bringing this forward a little bit earlier this year because we're asking for approval to obligate up to 25% of our tentative dollars for '20 in order to get purchase orders out the door that would essentially allow materials be received prior to the start of the school year and for summer facility projects to continue and be started as early as July 1st. So I'm going to go over the budget assumptions. Ms. Yar presented these at the March 5th committee meeting, so I'll just kind of briefly go through any changes from that meeting to now. On our revenue assumptions, at this point, we have reduced new property on our tax levy revenue, or tax levy for 2019 down to zero, but all other revenue assumptions stayed the same, and we will be revisiting that when we get into our 2019 tax levy discussions. So I'm going to go through a couple of our major funding sources for revenue, one being our evidence-based funding. And here we can see, year-over-year, from '18 through our projected '20 budget, we've seen a 7% increase in evidence-based funding. We've essentially assumed that a 6% increase from '19 to '20 evidence-based funding resulting in our revenue of $153 million. Our property tax revenue net of collections, we have budgeted $153 million in our '20 budget, and this is a summary, again, of our tax levies from 2015 to '19. Our 2019 levy information is all estimated at this point. We'll be going into deeper discussion at the levy setting process, but if we had our '19 levy at the assumed 4.1 EAV increase, taking no new property, no CPI, at a tax rate of 7.0675%, we'd be at levying $154.9 million. So again, the CPI new property columns are just informational, but in '19, we are not assuming that in our revenue. So here's a little chart, kind of illustrating how our EAV affects our tax rate and our CPI. If EAV stays flat, our tax rate stays flat, and so if EAV decreases, tax rate increases and vice versa. Currently, for our district, we are seeing the EAV increasing, so you'll see in the next couple of slides our tax rate and EAV, how that's relating to our tax rate. So from 2008 to '16, EAV was decreasing at a 30.53% rate, and from '16 to '19, currently projecting slight increases up to our $2.2 billion of EAV projected in our 2020 budget. And down below a little bit, I do have the percentage of EAV increase from year-over-year from '16 to '19 showing you that as well. Here's a schedule of our tax, property tax rate. EAV from 2011 to '16 was decreasing, so you can see our tax rate rising, and from '15 to '19 projected EAV's decrease, I'm sorry, increasing, so our tax rate's decreasing here to settle at our 7.0675 tax rate for our tax levy. And this kind of gets a little bit of a picture of how this is affecting our tax levy dollars. So from 2012 through our projected '19, we essentially have saved $101 million to taxpayers with the decision to drop our levy and keep it consistently flat. Our last main piece of revenue source that we wanted to point out here is our CPRT revenue. This, again, was presented by Mrs. Yar, but for '20, we are projecting our CPRT revenue to come in at 17.6%. That is a 7% decrease from our '18 levels, I'm sorry, '19 levels. So if you look at our revenue in total here, $452 million. We have some major revenue sources, again, just illustrated on the side there, noticing that our local revenue makes up about half of our revenue streams with property tax, CPRT, health insurance, and other tuition expenditures, followed by our state revenue, and then, thirdly, our federal sources. Highlighting it, some changes on our budget expenditure assumptions. All assumptions stayed as previously presented. We did settle on a 4% increase in our healthcare claims. It was previously presented at 5%. It's about $2 million increase year-over-year for healthcare expenditure increase. And looking at our expenditures by operating, our operating fund expenditure budget by object, we could see here that salaries and benefits, 75% of our pie, followed by our purchase services and our supplies. So we do have some approved new district spends incorporated in our budget dollars presented today. Those, again, were brought forward to cabinet, discussed, and determined to be approved, be budgeted, and here's a list of those totaling $1.9 million. And we also have some FY '20 pending requests from facilities. Facilities, we've been bringing these forward for board approval, and this is kind of what we were speaking to earlier on regarding some additional operations projects that they're asking to be budgeted. We do have about $1.8 million available to fund these, so if all were approved, we would need additional $1 million. And this is our operating fund summary by fund here. We can see to the far right, we do have a balanced budget for FY '20, and we have ending fund balance of $139 million, which meets that, our fund balance policy. This does include our FY '19 budget amendment activity for our operating funds. And we do have notated our state TRS on behalf contributions, revenue, and expenditures. This is our '18 information. We're currently awaiting for some projections for our upcoming year. So this will be revised when we report back in May. And here is a look of our non-operating funds summary. Again, spending down all of our, a lot of our bond proceeds on our capital funds and our capital projects that are being budgeted, ending fund balance of $2.6 million. And any changes from this tentative budget to our final budget will be reported back at the May meeting for our public hearing on our budget. Any questions?
You're asking to have 25% of the budget approved to spend on purchase orders before the budget is finalized. About how much do you, of that 25%, do you anticipate needing to spend before the budget is approved?
The 25% is just a threshold, and again, it's primarily just to be able to cover some of those items that take the, you know, have long lead times on, from order to when we actually receive the material.
So what we've asked to spend it on is really curriculum and whatever facilities can get done during the summer work, so that we were ready to have schools open on time and then for students to have their school. So it's really for those items that, really, curriculum and facilities is really the two items. I don't know if that, I can get you a firmer number on that, but it's really to cover us really for this gap. And since I've been in this chair for a year now, I noticed last year, we weren't ready for schools because we couldn't be. We weren't issuing, you know, we couldn't issue POs. So that was really the root cause of our problem of not, some of our textbooks didn't arrive until November, because we didn't, couldn't issue the POs, we couldn't make our purchases. So it's really just to get those things, as Michelle had noticed, or had noted, that really for these long lead times. So I don't have a good quantifiable answer right now, but I could get that for you.
I guess the only reason I ask is, you're asking for up to 25%, but that's everything that isn't salaries and benefits?
No, it's not salaries and benefits. This is only...
No, I realize it's not salaries and benefits, but 25% is the rest of the budget.
Sure.
that you're looking to, for us to approve, or to allow you to start issuing POs on before we approve the final budget.
That's correct.
It just seemed like it's, that you're asking for liberty to issue POs on everything. It's just the way it looked.
Yeah. On the actual resolution, I believe we have it fine-tuned on there to allow things for long lead times. I think it's on our budget amendment presentation that it's, it's really for those items with long lead times.
Got it. Thank you.
Thrones.
I'm still kind of surprised at the projected decline in CPRT. Is that just because the state's keeping more of it? So CPRT is really just corporate income tax that the state rebates or gives back to the local municipalities. In this, in this economic climate, I don't know why corporate income tax would be going down. Is the state just taking more of it?
Yeah, I did do some research on that. And so there's five, five reasons why, from 18 to 19, the CPRT revenue decreased. So I have that, that I can provide, but I do have notated that stated, the state expenses increased about 2% from 18 to 19. So, yeah, they're taking their dollars off the top and then filtering down the rest. There's, was change in federal law so that their 2018 replacement tax revenues would only be realized in 18 and not any subsequent years. There's three, there's trans, they had to transfer some dollars from the replacement tax to the income tax fund. They also, and this is all on the Department of Revenue website, the income tax refund percentage decreased from 17.5% to 15.5% in 2019. So those are the contributing factors of why 18 reduced to 19. And then we just utilize that percentage decrease to project for 20.
One number that surprises me, and maybe I haven't followed, is for 20, Fund 20, was a deficit of most, no, close to 7 million. So, kind of curious on that one, why the set is so high on.
They're always in the hole for operations maintenance. They, we cannot, you know, we just.
Is it that much, I guess?
Yeah. Because I, we trans, we've been transferring money to make them whole last year. It's, it's been.
I don't remember it being that much, that's all.
Yeah, it's, it's usually.
Yeah, it's got seven, yeah, almost eight.
Yeah.
Well, alrighty then.
Other questions? So we'll come back to us on our April 23 meeting for a vote then. Arthel, you are next, sir. Security platform.
Tonight, I'm bringing forward Akamai IT security platform. This is an IT security platform that will help enhance the district's IT security strategy and prevent against current and future threats to our network. The problem, a growing number of cyber security attacks across businesses and agencies worldwide. Public sector has always been a prime target for those attacks for a couple of different reasons. One, the perception that public entities, municipalities, and governments don't invest in their IT security. And number one, their perception to easy access to large pots of money. Some of the, the five top attacks and trends over the past year or two that came out in the 2018 mid, mid-year cybersecurity point, report from Checkpoint was crypto mining, ransomware, banking trojans, spyware, and adware. Even with the best antivirus in place, doesn't keep us 100% safe. We're only as strong as our, as our, really where our biggest vulnerability is, and that's the end user. If you get a, an email that comes in that looks trustworthy and you click on a link, it's going to come into the network regardless if you got antivirus or not. So the focus of this and the problem is, once we do get a virus in our network, how do we protect ourselves from compromise of our sensitive data and how do we keep that from leaving our network? This here is a 30-day snapshot. We ran a pilot with Akamai product here from September, really, and it's still active at this point. And this is a snapshot from February 1 to March 1, where we did have some virus activity. The blue bar graph on the left represents the number of infections that we had. The bar graph on the right, the orange, is actually the number of attempted communications out of our network, whether that be to a malicious website or if that's trying to transmit sensitive data. Fortunately, we had the Akamai product in, in place where it stopped that communication and severed that, so we were able to protect our data. And this is just one of the functions that this software provides us. Background, so this drawing here is, you know, a quick overview of kind of what our, some of the tier one and tier two hybrid approach we have to IT security here currently. On the computer, again, we have antivirus on our servers and our, and our desktops and, and our laptops, and that provides us, so if a virus is attempting to come in, it'll look at it and quarantine it and isolate it and disable the virus. Again, that's for known threats only. So there are viruses that are released, specific variants that antivirus is just don't know about because they're released hourly sometimes. So it can get into your network, but that's your basic level protection. The brick wall that you see there is a representation of our firewall. What that allows is it's looking at any of our traffic coming and going from our network to verify, again, it's based on, to verify that it's not going to a malicious site. And again, that's not based on known threats only. And then it'll, then our traffic will go out to the internet. We look at a few alternative choices to Akamai in order to enhance our IT security. One of those was enhancing our current firewall that you saw in the previous slide. Again, that modification of the firewall, while we can still do and we still continue to do, that it would be a daily task and a full-time job to do so. And then we're limited to, again, only known threats to be, and that still leaves us vulnerable. We can do nothing. Again, that's really not an option. It leaves us vulnerable to current threats, and more importantly, it leaves us vulnerable to compromising our data. And none of these solutions we have in place now help really protect us from that. We look at several other vendors with this process to see, and there are several that do the same thing as what Akamai does. A couple of reasons why we chose the Akamai product. One of those being that there is a, the other vendors you do charging and fund, or they charge you for the product based on bandwidth utilization. So we don't have a good, it's not a consistent budget based on how much bandwidth we're using, whereas Akamai, they give us a fixed cost based on user, user count, which will not change. So we're able to budget that quite easily across multiple years. Number two is, I'll use a military strategy analogy with this, but Akamai actually has the largest capacity to support our environment with 216,000 servers and over 120 countries, countries in the world. So that allows a much larger, a vast, robust solution to be able to protect us, basically more troops on the battlefield. So the solution, and we'll see it on a diagram on the next slide, but is to take our two-tiered IT security strategy to a three-tiered hybrid approach. And what that does, and we'll see it in the next slide, basically, we're expanding our perimeter. This is a cloud-hosted environment, and basically, we're pushing that threat just a little bit farther away from us. And this is actually, this is to be aligned to Goal 3, optimal climate, by protecting in our data and our IT infrastructure. So this drawing looks a little bit like the first, but we've added that in black, and I'll simplify this. Everything in the black is that expanded perimeter. Everything on the far right is either a good website or a bad website it's going to. And to think of the, think of Akamai as a TSA agent at the airport. Unlike any other solutions we got in place, what this does is, is data or any type of traffic is going out of our network, and it's left our house, and we're sitting at the airport, that TSA agent is looking, asking, what's in your bags? Do you have sensitive data with you? Are you going, where are you going? Is that really your end destination? I'm going to look at all these other resources to really confirm whether or not you're going where you say you're going, and if you're going to a malicious site, I'm going to stop you right there. And this is, again, because of the capacity of what Akamai provides over the, with over those 216,000 servers. It also looks at behavior, too. So it'll, it'll look at the, the specific behavior and be able to understand whether or not that, if there's something else going on suspicious in the background. Total cost for the solution is $54,000 annually, and that's, it's billed at a monthly $4,500. It's a three-year contract, and that's based on full-time employees. We use the number 4,000 for that. So it's, breaks down to about a dollar, just a little under a dollar 13 per user per month. And that's based on the full-time employees, covers all the students at no cost. Assessing the situation, because we've piloted this for several months now, we're actually live on the system, what would happen, so there's no project time. Basically, they would activate our subscription, and we continue forward with this, with this solution. The, the solution provides us real-time and historical reporting, and also notifies us right away. So if we do have a threat in our network, first, it's going to stop it, and then it's going to say, hey, here's where your threat is, go clean it up now. Additionally, AT&amp;T and Akamai will provide our IT department webinar training and over-the-phone support as we learn the best practices and how to use all the tools within the solution. Return on investment. So adapting our security posture will help us minimize our vulnerability. It's very, it's integral to be able to do this. The types of attacks we're actually going to be protecting against are really what's going to be prevalent over the next three to five years. It's just the approach that the bad guys are using to, to really make their money right now. And a lot of the security reports, and I included one in the PDSA presentation packet that went out to show some of that stuff, it's where it's trending, and this is going to protect against many of those, many of those threats coming forward. It's going to protect our personal data for students and employees. It's going to ensure that we're not having stuff leave our network without us knowing, and it's going to stop it from going to really out to the bad guys. One really great advantage to the Akamai product, it is a subscription-based, cloud-hosted software platform, so it's a three-year contract. So if we use this for three years and it's protecting us, but we see something three years down the road that does more, it's simple as pulling this solution out and putting another solution in. And we've already got our return on investment from this platform because it's served its purpose over the three years that we, that we've committed to it. Reporting back, we can, and what we intend to do is provide a monthly report to cabinet, which will show us, I've showed it in a graph format, but there's a great report that comes out of the system that shows, did we have threats in our network? Were they blocked and detected? And did it keep us from the data leaving our network? So there's some really great reporting utilities within that that we'll be able to provide a very executive-level report to cabinet on a monthly basis. That's it. Any questions?
Jason.
Just want to say that, number one, thanks. Mr. Rattell and I did walk through this, so I saw this before. And one thing I will comment on is that we, we really, it was a good thing that we were doing the pilot of this when we had our issues. So really, in a sense, we got a little bit of ahead of it. And as I'm sure everybody would say, is we got a little lucky, but the fact is that this is the right approach. And what I will say is, the three-tiered makes a lot of sense, and when I compare it to what we're doing on the corporate side, this is really similar, and especially having a cloud-based, gives a lot of flexibility on the technical side. So it's a lot of my point of view, a good technical approach on this one.
Are you saying that the great email debacle would have been much worse had this not been piloted? Is that where?
So from a sensitive data perspective, absolutely. We, we could have been a lot more vulnerable to sensitive data getting out of our network. As far as business impact, it probably wouldn't have been any worse because we did have viruses in our network. So it did, there was a business impact, just not a compromise of data.
So that was kind of my question. So this actually wouldn't have prevented what happened because my understanding is somebody clicked on something they shouldn't have clicked on, and this isn't going to prevent that, right?
It, it won't. There, with, with the IT security strategy that we're taking, there's, there's many things on our checklist that we have to do. Some of those, we showed up and we've learned from, from our mistakes. And there are, there are certain pieces that we could have done better, and we've learned from and now are doing, and we've implemented those protocols. It would have mitigated this current, the issue we recently had.
Let me just follow up on that because you can't prevent somebody from clicking on it, but the outgoing side is what I understood in your description. So if there was communication going out, I think the Akamai would have stopped that, is if I understood correctly.
That's correct, and it did.
It would have helped. It's just you can't prevent people from doing dumb stuff. I mean.
Okay, anything else?
Hey, this will come back to the board for an approval at our next board meeting on April 9.
Thank you.
U.S. history resource adoption.
Yes, and Corey Nielsen, our dean of K-12 social sciences here.
Corey is with you.
To present that, that presentation. I will pull that up.
So good evening, and thank you for taking time to hear this proposal about the U.S. history resource adoption. This resource is coming from the work of the curriculum leadership team on U.S. history for the high school. The work here has been looking at the problem where there have been newest standards adopted for the state of Illinois for social sciences, and inquiry is at the heart of those. We currently lack a district-aligned inquiry-based system for instruction and a district-aligned resource that allows inquiry to happen naturally in the classroom. What we're looking at today is a solution to try to remedy that. Currently, we have a wide range of types of inquiry happening inside of our classrooms. There are pockets of teachers, including the CLT, which is our curriculum leadership team, and our professional learning communities, working on these activities, but we don't have a, a natural base for it. The new curriculum that rolls out next year expects full-fledged inquiry to be happening in a systemic type of fashion. We're looking for an opportunity now to ensure that that's more viable in our classrooms. Excuse me. We looked at four alternatives. We looked at maintaining our current approach of having the, the pockets of teachers working on this, and that we should maintain that. We should still encourage them to continue that practice. But we did look at the four publishers. We looked at McGraw-Hill and Horton-Nifflin-Harkort. Neither of them made it past our, our evaluation phase, and we did not pursue any further quotes from them. Both Pearson's Materials and TCI, the Teachers Curriculum Institute, their materials were deemed to be well-aligned to our curriculum and our instructional strategies, and they came back to the, the quote phase. We ended up recommending that History Alive Pursuing American Ideals as a common text for inquiry-driven teaching and learning in our U.S. history high school classrooms. The reason for this is that when it came down to the section of our rubrics we use about the instructional shifts and the alignment to it, TCI's materials better aligned than Pearson's. Additionally, they were the more cost-effective choice. The TCI materials came in at $188,401.50, whereas the Pearson materials were about $213,000 or so. So in addition to being the better-aligned resource, they are actually the more fiscally responsible resource as well, so it's a win-win from both those aspects. What would we be getting for this $188,000? We'd be getting 1,785 student textbooks, along with six years of online access to their online textbooks, which are translatable to Spanish. That is where the teacher resources are housed. They have review games and digital activities on there as well. And there are 60 inquiry placards that come with those teacher resources as well. They're used to set up basically kind of rotation stations inside the classroom, asking students to analyze. to analyze various primary sources on the topic of U.S. history and draw conclusions and inferences about those, really bringing that inquiry practice into the classroom on a day-to-day basis. In assessing the situation, we will look at our Focus Skill Assessments, our professional learning communities and classroom assessments, and our annual curriculum audit. Additionally, we will start beginning this process of assessing the situation on our May 3 Institute Day and extend that information to our August 28th and 29th Institute Days, where we'll be designing feedback from the teachers about what it is they feel they need to make this curriculum meet, where the resources and their practices in the classrooms with students. I like to use the analogy in that PD side that we're really going to find out what it is our consumer wants on May 3, so that we can have our curriculum leadership teams develop that this summer, build the product, and deliver it to our customer on those August Institute Days. And additionally, we will work with our curriculum implementation leaders to implement and monitor curriculum throughout the next school year. Our return on investment is that Illinois standards do expect inquiry-driven instruction, and that changes in these expectations require changes in support. Trying to shift not only the curriculum to be more inquiry-aligned with our curriculum leadership teams, but then they have the practice match that in the classrooms. And that's going to end up showing through the results on the inquiry side of asking questions, gathering and using evidence, and taking evidence-based action, which are part of our Focus Skill Assessments, and will align to SATs at the high school level. We plan to report back to Instructional Council and the Board of Education in September and April of the coming years, and at any other time that this entity may ask me to come forward and present on that. At this time, I welcome questions.
I just have a question on the timing. Is this going to be implemented next year? This resource will be implemented next year?
Yes.
But you're giving it to the teachers on August 28th and 29th?
They will have access to the curriculum prior to that. This is just the resource. In terms of when they will have access to it, by purchasing it now, as soon as we get the PO to them, they have in the past turned on the internet digital access like that for me. So I do have faith that if we send them the PO, when's their purchasing cutoff? April something? That we'll have that for them even before school lets out.
So what's being developed over the summer, then?
What we develop over the summer is the professional learning for the teachers to implement inquiry practices aligned to that textbook.
Which is what, you'll be giving him on the 28th and 29th of August?
Yes.
So my question really is, so the ones that want to, they'll have the summer, they'll be able to look at the resource, and they'll be able to familiarize themselves with it, start thinking about it?
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
So I have to ask this. Social science curricula always tends to attract controversy. Are we anticipating any few hot points on this? I was just reading through the chapters and...
I do not anticipate any hot points coming up from the textbook resource itself. We are required by a state mandate to discuss controversial issues, however, in our civics course, so we are a natural place for such topics to arise and a natural place to address them. I really am trying to encourage teachers to hit that head on with the inquiry-based curriculum so that nothing ends up being a kind of gotcha or caught with our kind of eye to the side where we're hitting it directly on.
I guess the old saying, "Am I going to get phone calls on any of this?"
I would not anticipate that. Additionally, with their, with their resources, we did adopt them last year for middle school. So students will be coming up with a kind of familiarity with the resources as well. The learning curve will be more for teachers. The last several years, we've used them for our high school courses in economics, world history, and world geography. Those two courses are not running this year with the new Global Studies course that was approved for the freshmen. They are optional courses as electives, but just no one is taking them this year.
I am forced to ask, on the first one, it says, "What is history?" So is this the first history course people are taking?
Absolutely not. They've been taking history throughout elementary school, and they have two U.S. history courses currently in middle school.
That was a leading question. I knew what the answer was. No, I guess all I'm trying to say is, this is like essentially reassessing what is history is really the nature of it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Dixon.
Yeah, I guess my question would be, since we have a diverse background, what is, what does it, what is it encompass in Black History?
Black History is included throughout the course. Most of the highlight touchpoints that you would assume with issues of slavery, how slavery expanded, resistance to slavery through the Civil War and prior to, Jim Crow laws and kind of resistance to that following the Civil War up through the Civil Rights Movement. And additionally, we would be able to use student-based inquiry to dive into civil rights issues even further. That's something that is actually lacking in a lot of our content-based textbooks that are out there from most of the publishers. That is why the two that we did not go past the rubric phase, they weren't allowing for much of that inquiry-based. They were very content-driven. Here are the facts. Not what is history, but this is the history. You consume it, you believe it, you move on. We wanted to take an approach that has that inquiry side in there more, where students are building their understandings based upon analysis of issues and resources, like primary sources, secondary sources.
Okay. Does it go before slavery?
Does it go before slavery?
Yeah, history, any type.
In the U.S. course, not so much, because for African-American history, no, that's kind of the beginning point of it.
Okay. I would disagree with you, but I understand where you're coming from.
Beginning point in the book is with that. There are African-Americans, Africans here before slavery, yes. And in the book, though, it really comes up as the beginning point of that is slavery.
I'm just going to...
Just one second, when I'm done.
Oh, no problem.
I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
Pause. You're allowed.
You had a pause.
Yeah. Yeah.
You wanted to tag onto something, David, that he was saying?
Just really quickly, I would imagine that the opportunity through inquiry, there would be the chance for discussion of those earlier years, the pre-slavery.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That would be true of any and all groups of people as well. I know our state right now is currently considering LGBTQ+ issues when being taught in our classrooms. That would not be in a current textbook more often than not. Usually when it is, it's the Stonewall Riots, and I think 1969, it's a paragraph. However, we would be responsible for teaching more than that, and through inquiry, we are capable of doing that.
I'm going to ask why these things are flashing and going off so much tonight, because that's real frustrating.
They're doing it more than usual.
Yeah, so if somebody could look into that, but that was not my question for you.
Thank you.
I'm kind of with Mr. Rollins, and we have found in the past that implementation issues, if we don't have teacher buy-in and teacher preparation, have caused us great distress. So I'm assuming you have the buy-in because of the process that you've gone through. I see that you're going to, excuse me, that you have the monthly curriculum. What do you have, the monthly?
The Curriculum Implementation Leaders?
Yeah, I just, to me, and I get it, it's a timing thing when you get everything in place, but, and that it's the teachers, the onus is on them to look at the information until they get to see it at Institute Day in August where they get professional development time. But we just struggle to get people to feel comfortable starting and to do it, what, a couple of days before school starts? Yes, teachers should be looking at it ahead of time, but they're going to say, "Well, you didn't give it, you know, you didn't give us the..."
And that's why I want to take the approach of using the Institute Day in May in order to find out what it is they want. We present to them as a curriculum leadership team. Here is what we have. Here is what it looks like and how you access it. Now what we need to know from you is, what are the gaps in understanding so that we can build some PD for that to deliver to you in August?
Will you also, and I see that at the Teachers Institute at May 3, but will you also see if there's anybody who is interested in doing it before the end of August? Will that be part of the conversation, or will it just solely be focused on what you're going to provide in August?
I suppose that could be a possibility. The official training on the resource itself is a half-day from the company, and that would have to occur on the August 28th is what it's being planned for right now, because it is a one-half-day training from them.
Is there an online training that would be available to them if they chose?
There are a series of videos that they have available on their website for kind of walking through some common access and issues. We do have several staff members who also currently use it, because we, like I said, we've been using it for middle school and other high school courses. Many of the U.S. history teachers are probably fairly familiar with it already from teaching government, I'm sorry, econ class, which where we use it.
Same resource?
The same, not the same textbook, the same publishing company. So the resource would be different, but the layout and access, the place you go and how you navigate would all be the same.
Two words, integrated literacy. Okay, I just really want it to be successful, and that's a stumbling block that we've had in the past to success of other programs since we brought them in. And it's all about timing, I understand, but...
The timing is absolutely one of the questions, and that's why I think that we were talking earlier about the preapproval from some spending, because if this couldn't be purchased until July 1st, we wouldn't even have the resources available till after school started.
I also want to draw your attention, there's an attachment, but it's called TCI Professional Development. And what it does, it's a three-page document, and outlines each mode of professional development, the outcomes for that, how many participants, et cetera. And that plan was vetted by Instructional Council, which includes two CILs who were implementing TCI materials, curriculum implementation leaders who were implementing TCI materials this year in the middle school. And they gave us some great feedback on what teachers need May 3, what they need August 28th and 29th, and then what they need throughout the year. So you can see more detail there on that attachment.
It's called...
I have one quick question now is, what will be the measurement to determine that solution moving student academic achievement?
That's where we use primarily the Focus Skill Assessments, where they're assessments aligned to the content of the course, along with the categories of asking questions and planning inquiries, gathering and using evidence, communicating conclusions, and taking informed action. And the Focus Skill Assessments are assessments we're giving across all disciplines. So they're kind of communicable in terms of we're able to talk to teachers at other, within our grade level, our teacher teams, our academies, in order to discuss how students are doing. While we know that asking questions looks a little bit different in, say, science than social science than in math, the idea of what are these questions looking like? How do they go about pursuing them is something we can do, and they also align to the types of questions that are on the SAT.
Do you have targets that you'd like to see SAT numbers spy for this category?
We have not used the Focus Skill Assessments. This is the first year we use them at Global Studies at the high school level, and we're looking this year to kind of work the kinks out of it so that next year we can give it on a full-scale level. We would be able to develop a baseline next year to see what kind of correlates from our scores on the Focus Skill Assessments to SAT scores, and kind of begin developing that now that we have a baseline, what can we get to and monitor that progress along the way.
Mr. Escobedo is not here tonight, but I know he would ask that question about how do you know that this is the right tool in your toolbox? And how are you going to measure that?
Well, then, thank you for asking so that when he asked you that I was able to answer it. Or if he's watching at home.
Okay, he's in China.
Probably not watching at home then.
Okay. Any other questions for Corey? All right, this will come to the board for approval at our April 9 meeting then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other business for tonight? We have no public speakers for tonight? No board comments? Okay. I will take a motion for adjournment then. Moved the second? All right, all in favor, say aye. Pose same sign, we adjourned at 7:36.